State University, online at N W P R dot org.
First time I've gone to bed.
All right.
In a long time. Since camping out at Bergdorf.
Yeah, the storm was.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, oh, my gosh. And anyway, welcome to the Wednesday, November 18 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission, who has just been previewing or reviewing the storm. At any rate, first up on our agenda, approval of the minutes of October 28.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Wendy, for motion. Second, thank you, Gregory. Any comments, corrections, observations? All in favor of approving the minutes of October 28 say aye.
Aye.
opposed and abstentions. Looks like Kurt and Deb, who should abstain, are not here, so we'll cover it. All right, that's the minutes.
That's what the storm will do, too.
Yeah. Next up, correspondence. Anything from staff?
Nothing from staff tonight.
Okay. I'll only just add that we had the first of the subcommittee meetings to talk about tree planting and other tasks to be reviewed. And lunch was great, thank you, Ann. So we're off and rolling finally on that activity. Any other correspondence from members of the committee? Transportation, Joel?
The Transportation Committee met a couple of weeks ago. And several items of discussion. First, we spent some time with an ASUI senator who was talking about two programs that Senate is talking about pushing. One, a program providing safe rides. That is some way to get home when you're totally stewed on a Friday night. And they're talking about an experimental program for one weekend that ASUI would fund. And they're talking about the possibility, if that proves good, they may do more. They, the Senate is also interested in mulling over the possibility of the Pullman bus route. It seems that both the student groups on both campuses are interested in exploring it further. They didn't seem to have much knowledge of the studies that had been done several years ago about the ridership or about the funding costs. But at any rate, the students are interested, and we may hear more about it at some point. The balance of the meeting was talking about bicycles. First, talking about the way signage might be put along some of the major routes, so many minutes or so many miles to such and such destinations at critical intersections on the trail system. And the second main topic was talking about bicycle facilities, mainly being marking types. Talking about the streets which might have bicycle routes, streets which might have sharrows, the markings on the pavement, streets which might have protected bike routes with some barrier between traffic and the bicycles. So these are all good topics which will continue to be discussed at future meetings, but we're working on it. The next meeting presumably will be the second Thursday in December, from 4:00 to 6:00.
Questions for Joel? I have been pleased to see sprouting up some signs that indicate where there is a pedestrian way that is not obvious. One of them is on North Van Buren, from Morton going south. It connects a dead-end street to Morton. And it's just a little public path, I think it says, or something like that.
Orphan pathways.
Yes, and it's orphan pathways having signs.
Well, it's been a long time since I wrote a memo complaining about the orphan paths that nobody's paying attention to. So I hadn't seen those signs, but I'm delighted.
So the other one that I saw, I was coming back in on Mountain View, and where Mountain View is headed west and then bends south.
Right.
That dips down through the creek and comes up, and that one was signed.
That's another on my list of paths.
Anyway, so.
One question. You mentioned the transportation was talking about the issue. I want to try and do a test program, one weekend of giving rides to students that shouldn't be driving. What means of transportation were they thinking about utilizing?
They have had conversations with the, one of the taxi providers.
Okay.
And they are not going to try to do it either with volunteer vehicles or to provide their own vehicles.
Uber.
Wise.
Wise. Not Uber, huh?
We congratulated them on that insight.
Yeah. But it's also not a women's transportation program. I think WSU has a rides program on some evenings.
Well, this, I believe the safe rides would probably cover some of that, too.
Cover that, too. All right. Okay. Open microphone. This is the time when I look at the camera and I try to induce members of the public to come down here and speak to the commission on matters that are not on our agenda or currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we give you that part of your 15 minutes of fame right here. And I'll look, and I'm getting the no from the audience, okay? All right, Mike, we're up to number six, the relevant criteria and standards conditional use permits.
So this is just continuing our ongoing discussion and review of our relevant criteria and standards. I think last time we reviewed variance criteria, and so this time, thought we'd go over conditional use permit and really special use permit criteria, since they're pretty similar in the zoning code. And so maybe just to start with, looking at the Local Land Use Planning Act and what that really provides us with any type of direction towards any criteria or any requirements that need to be in our code. And looking through the section on special use permits, they don't, there's only one reference that they make to conditional use permit, but really, they treat both of them the same, whether they're special or conditional. It's the same process, same requirements, and most jurisdictions only have one. You know, we have two, we draw a distinction. You know, it's really the same definition that you see on your screen there, just special use permits are, they're trying to distinguish the last sentence at the end by their potential impact on the entire community as opposed to a specific neighborhood, or judge for compliance with a comprehensive plan. Well, Local Land Use Planning Act requires that you judge for compliance with a comprehensive plan, no matter if it's a special or conditional use permit. So, and then within our zoning code, our criteria are exactly the same, as well as our section on special use permits. And so I made copies of the pertinent sections there for conditional use permits. I didn't make a copy of the special use section because it's verbatim exactly the same as the conditional use permit section. So, you know, in review of the Local Land Use Planning Act, everything that's in here, we have within our ordinance. So, you know, it discusses one public hearing, it has some notice requirements about how many days prior to that hearing, you need to provide notice, what the distance is, and then it goes on to, say, towards the end of the section, about granting of a special use permit, and then there's conditions that could be imposed by, in this case, the Board of Adjustment. And it goes through about eight criteria, typically trying to mitigate one of, you know, the proposed use. And so we have those really verbatim within our section. So, you know, in staff's review of the Local Land Use Planning Act, we're pretty much consistent with what the state currently has in the special use permit section. So when we get down to conditional or special use, uses, they're really uses within the zoning code that aren't permitted within, you know, each zone. You've got to go through this process, requires one public hearing before the Board of Adjustment, all neighbors within 600 feet are notice of the application. And it's not an allowed use by right, because there's certain characteristics of the use which would put a burden on adjacent properties and really need to be mitigated. But typically, the use is allowed, there just needs to be some type of mitigation that you go through, through the public hearing process and the Board of Adjustment, that they typically impose conditions in order to make it, you know, fit in with the neighborhood. Do you have a question?
Mike, who makes the determination whether an entity has to apply for a conditional use or a special use permit?
Well, within our zoning code, this is kind of the distinction. I mean, it, when the code was first written, I think a lot of these uses were carried over, and, you know, we've typically had these, I want to say, since maybe the 60s or 70s, all the special uses that you typically see are related to maybe local government, or, so we've got fire stations, police stations, fairgrounds, cemeteries. Typically, they serve the broader community. But they're similar in nature, at least a lot of them are, as far as the impacts to some of the conditional use permits. And, I mean, it's the same process that you go through, no matter which one you're looking at. So conditional use permits, you know, you typically, and a lot of these are, you know, you want to look at schools or churches, because they're typically located in residential areas, and they may have drugs, you know, traffic burden on the neighborhood, may have, you know, noise issues, they usually take up larger pieces of property, there's usually larger parking lots, and so maybe landscape buffers are warranted. And so it's an opportunity for the Board of Adjustment and staff to make recommendations to the board, and then the community members that live in that area to come out and give input about the potential nuisances that you could run into, or the impacts of one of those uses going into the neighborhood. And so.
Mike, is there any particular reason that the special use category tends to be filled with government types of services and the CUPs tend to be more on the private side? Is that just the way it turns out?
That's just the way it shows up in our zoning code. You know, I think it's probably relates back to the, trying to draw the distinction that they had made, you know, a number of years ago, between a conditional and a special use, with the last sentence there, you know, the potential impact on the entire community as opposed to the specific neighborhood. You know, I think it probably could be viewed as, maybe there's one police station for the entire community, and maybe, you know, it should be a broader discussion than just that neighborhood, but typically you have maybe a school, or a church, or a community center, where just the adjacent neighborhood is using that facility, and they're scattered through town. But, you know, I can't really come up with a good reason why you would draw a distinction between a conditional and a special use permit when you go through the exact same process. You know, it says, or it speaks to comparing it with the comprehensive plan, but when you get into the criteria of, you know, a special use permit or conditional use permit, the last one right now is, you know, will not be in conflict with the comprehensive plan. And so, you know, you're judging both of them by the same criteria, and all the other jurisdictions typically have one. They either choose a conditional use permit, and they have all those uses listed, or that, or they have a special use permit. There's really no compelling reason in order to.
Why not get rid of it then?
Group them. And that's so, you know.
If they're redundant, almost to the point of being redundant, why not get rid of it and just have a CP?
Yeah, and that's what we're going to propose, yeah.
I think you said this already, and it went over me, but, so with a conditional use permit, you notice the neighbors within a certain distance. With a special use permit, if it's covering, you know, like an armory that's affecting the whole community, who do you notice?
It's still the same process.
It's still, you still stay within that.
Technically, we would still, we still send it out to the Daily News, so it's still published in the paper. So that's how the broader community is noticed for something like that. But our requirement is actually 300 feet in the state code, and we double that, so we go 600 feet.
So you do the same.
Yeah, so we do the same process, but, you know, and then the site's posted with signs saying there's a public hearing. But, you know, the Lupa requires us to publish it in the newspaper, the paper, 15 days prior, as well as send out the notification to everybody within 300, so.
And they both go to the Board of Adjustment?
Yeah, same process, they go to the Board of Adjustment, so.
It does seem just like a.
Redundant.
Very redundant. I think we can simplify it.
Wayne, just for your background, the large task that staff is working on is reviewing the whole zoning code. This bit sits in the zoning code as setting up the rules for these processes. So we're just working through reviewing them, which will ultimately become forward to council as part of a package of changes to the zoning code.
Joel? I think maybe I've been on this commission for too long, forgetting things, but it wasn't, one or the other of those was heard by this commission at one time historically. I think that historically is one of the reasons why there are two of them. It distinguishes between things that were heard by the Board of Adjustment and things that were heard by this.
I think that's right, because I think we got so busy at a point.
Yeah.
That we decided, there were just too many things, and so the conditional use then went over to, because if you notice, the Board of Adjustment is listed on the ASU, on the special, but not on the other one. And I think that's because.
Yeah.
You're right. I think we, I remember, we had subdivision after subdivision, it was really getting
We were even meeting on the fifth Wednesday of the month.
Larry Hodge, over busy.
Now he's retired.
And there was one point where we didn't even have a Board of Adjustment, and all the variances and conditional use permits all went to Planning and Zoning Commission, and that was, I think, prior to the 1980s.
Yeah, that's a good piece of memory.
That's prior to me, I think.
So, Mike, the presumption in each of these, or we lump them together, but the presumption is that the proposal is broadly permitted, broadly approvable. And the issue is on making sure that it is fine-tuned a bit. It's an opportunity for fine-tuning that by right wouldn't have caused. But broadly, we anticipate a church could be located in a neighborhood.
Yeah.
And so it's not about denying that, it's more about tuning the nature of this neighborhood. Everybody's, it's in a bowl, and we need some taller buffers around the edges.
Correct, yeah. It's about mitigating a lot of those potential conflicts, you know, with the neighborhood and nuisances and impacts that could arise from, you know, these special-type uses that would go in those areas. And so, you know, in looking at the definition, it says it's a use permitted, you know, so it's allowed in one or more zones, but it has special characteristics peculiar to such use because of size, technological purposes, processes or equipment, or because of exact location with reference to surroundings, streets, or existing improvements, or demands on public facilities, requires a special degree of control to make uses consistent with and compatible with other existing or permissible uses in the same zone, so.
Okay. I think you might be stating that a bit strongly. I guess I could, you know, to pick an example, a, some uses proposed in an area, suppose it's a significant traffic generator, and a proposed location simply has inadequate streets to handle it. In the judgment of the board, I could see denial rather than conditions.
Because there's no potential to mitigate it.
Yeah.
I mean, a stoplight you could put in as a mitigation, but a widening of a street might not even be possible.
Yeah, it's to say that you could still deny it. Yeah, I mean, if you were presented with something like that, then sure, that, you know, there's no way to mitigate it, then it's incompatible with the area, and they could render a denial. So looking at our criteria, I think right away, we can eliminate at least a portion of number one or number six, because they're the same thing. So we've got a proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety, number one, if located, we're proposed, and we've got pretty much the same one duplicated down there for number six. And so we, you know, this is where we go through nuisances that could arise with some particular use going into a neighborhood. And then it gives examples, noise, dusk, glare, vibration, odors. Number two, proposed use meets all the applicable development standards of the zoning code. You know, it's always good to review this as part of that process, just to make sure they're meeting all those, but typically, staff would review that prior to the, prior to going to the Board of Adjustment and the public hearing. And it's really just stating, you know, what's already required. They have to meet all development standards, because it's part of the zoning code, or else they'd be applying for a variance. But it's always good to have that as a criteria in there, and so that people know that they're going to be judged by the zoning code and all of our standards when they go into the application process. And then the use will not be injurious or detrimental to adjoining properties of the neighborhood. So this just gets back to, you know, causing an impact on the surrounding area. And this one's always been a bit of a challenge. Proposed use is a public necessity, or is justified by the applicant and deemed by the Board of Adjustment to be a benefit to the public. And that's just always been, you know, it's usually one or the other. I mean, it doesn't have to be both of them, it could either be a public necessity, or it could be justified by the applicant and deemed by the board to be a benefit to the public, but, you know, that's really hard to determine. You know, it's just.
Right, so the most recent one that I recall was a conditional use permit to have ground floor residential in a motor business. It was a proposal behind Rose Hours, facing Omen Street.
Yeah.
And other parts of the building were, by right, okay, but the ground floor, five apartments or whatever they were, were the cause for the CUP hearing.
Yes.
Okay. And so then you get to struggling with, is it a public necessity? Well, no, it's not a public necessity. A fire station.
I mean, housing is a public necessity, but, you know.
Then everything becomes a public, right? Or is a benefit to the public? And not for private gain? We've got one of them where it's got that phrase, and, well, of course, it's for private gain, it's putting more houses. So there's something about that, and I don't know whether splitting it into two.
Well, I think that.
Maybe the or is.
We'd probably just try to look at maybe getting rid of it, you know, looking at the other, the criteria that a lot of the other jurisdictions use, that one, you know, you see a lot of similarities, and they all say it a little bit differently in their criteria, but they're really saying about the same thing with the criteria. But this one shows up in none of the other jurisdictions. I think this is maybe, you know, it's pretty much just one of our criteria, and it doesn't show up anywhere else. It's pretty much unique to Moscow for that criteria. So, well, we can go through the rest and take a look at some other jurisdictions and see what you think.
Before you move on, though, I would prefer to keep six and edit number one.
Okay.
Because number one now is a compound thing that's got an and in it.
Yeah, and we've got, you know, I've got it, maybe a proposal at the end that I'll share with you. I didn't have enough time to put that in your materials. It just kind of highlighted the.
The duplication.
Pretty, yeah, I mean, the obvious one there, so let me get to that. So number five is the character of the proposed use, if developed according to the plan as submitted, will be in harmony with the area which is to be located. And so this is similar to will not be injurious or detrimental to adjoining properties of the neighborhood, so just getting back to fitting in with the neighborhood and not causing any type of burden on it.
I just need the second phrase.
Will be in harmony?
No, that if developed according to the plan as submitted.
It should be developed.
Isn't that a requirement?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'd say you don't need it, yeah. And, you know, the board could always put a condition on it that changes, or, you know, requires a change from what's submitted, so, you know, that one's probably.
Doesn't that follow?
Problematic as well, yeah.
It also seems like a conditional use is, by definition, something that the code has already said, yes, you can do this if you mitigate some of the impacts. And then if you say, well, it's also got to be in harmony with the area which it's located, well, hasn't the code, hasn't the city already decided that, yes, it will be if you put it here? We're just looking at, it's, a lot of these criteria look like they're putting affirmative burdens on the proponent to get the conditional use permit, when really what you want to do, I would think, was say, okay, we've already decided this is okay, now just do it in such a way that it's not going to be a problem, a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I go quite that far. I still reserve the right of the board to say no.
If, if what?
If.
Based on that criteria, what would you have thought?
So this comes back to sort of the tension between flexibility and predictability.
Exactly.
Gregory's saying, well, we've set out these things. Predictability says, we're going to let you, we want to be sure that you buffered the parking lot or whatever, but by and large, follow the prescription carefully, and it will be approved.
Right.
And Joel is saying, there may be conditions outside, flexibility isn't enough, we may, it may be that it just can't work.
Based on the site or the proposal.
But don't you make that determination by saying you're unable to mitigate the condition? So the board still would have that flexibility, I would think, so.
And that makes, yeah, and that goes back to what you were saying before, that, you know, street light versus widening the street. Some things just, you can't mitigate it, given.
Right.
The neighborhood or the location of the hillside or whatever. Yeah.
And then the last one is just will not be in conflict with the comprehensive plan. And so that's where we get back to just making sure it's consistent with the plan. So it gone through.
Can you, given the discussion we've been having, what would be an example? Can you, given the discussion we've been having, what, what would be an example of something? Again, since, since the zoning code has said, you can put this here, this zone, all of the things, you know, being mitigable, hasn't the determination already been made that it would be, in general, consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
In general?
Yeah.
Unless you can't mitigate something. I just, and I, actually, I, I agree with you. I, I see your point, and I agree with that point, but it, it just seems that some of these criteria are going, are, are not capturing that.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of a wonderful example, but I haven't.
I can think of one, that was St. Mary's School, because it got my neighborhood upset when they wanted to do the, the gym, and you guys passed it on to the Board of Adjustments, which got everybody upset. But the, they wanted to exceed the roof or height.
Yeah.
And there was no reason to. So, that would be an example, you know, I mean, among other things, I think everybody was okay with most of it, except for...
And that would have been, you know, that would have been captured in one of the criteria where they don't meet the applicable development standards, but I think they had a variance tied in with that. So, when they approved the variance, then consequently, they would have approved the conditional use permit, and they would have met the criteria. And so, I believe that, that's what happened on that one. But, yeah, you know, it's, you really have to have a pretty compelling reason to request a variance these days. You know, at one point in time, it was pretty easy to come by, fairly, you know, flexible as far as handing out variances, and it's, you know, the Board of Adjustment has really tightened that up. And so, it's, you know, and as, as it should be. I mean, if, if there's an issue that needs to be addressed, you know, you should probably, the, the procedure's going through and amending the zoning code. If it's, you know, being too onerous to certain, you know, subsection of the population, then it should typically be amended in the, in the code, or go through a conditional use or special use permit process. You know, they had that court case that allows us to, to do those things. And if you look at the Lupa section here, that's really what, in, in the very end, subsection F, that's really what that's talking, you know, what speaks to. Exceptions or waivers of standards other than use should, can be addressed by this section. And so, you know, allows you that flexibility to say that you can go, you know, as long as it's in your zoning code, that you can go higher, you know, if, if, maybe it's a 40-foot maximum height requirement, and then under conditional use permit, it allows you to go up to 65 feet in height. That's really the mechanism for doing that these days, instead of, you know, the variance process, just because the criteria are meant to be so, you know, I guess rigid, so that, you know, you're not just approving every variance that comes through. It's really those special circumstances, so.
Getting to your point, I, I, sometimes I think there is a desire to be a little bit redundant in saying, oh, mentioning the comp plan or mentioning something else, just to remind citizens. People come with issues. They don't spend a lot of time at City Hall. They don't study the comp plan all the time. They don't deal with it. And in some ways, I think some of the redundancy that you're talking about is simply a reassurance. Oh, yeah, we're looking at the comp plan. I mean, duh.
That there's some underlying philosophy.
On the other hand, not everybody's aware, or even certain, I'm, I'm just thinking why some of these, there seems to be a little bit of a redundancy. Oh, did we look at the comp plan? Well, I hope. But we've been probably told in, you know, 30 places in, in our ordinances that that's what we will do. But when somebody comes in with a specific issue, they're not going to read 30 pages of stuff. They just want, and this helps reassure people, I think. But I may be wrong about that.
Well, usually, it doesn't get into that great a detail, right? I mean, it's pretty specific proposal, and then the comp plan's this general policy document. So, you know, maybe an example would be if the comp plan said that, you know, you should keep public facilities out of the 100-year floodplain, and we had a proposal where a school was trying to, you know, maybe locate in Joseph Ballfields in the 100-year floodplain. You know, that would be a, probably an example of direct conflict with a comp plan, and, you know, could possibly be denied if we had that type of language in the, in the comp plan. But typically, you're not going to have, you know, a, a neighborhood school or a neighborhood church. You're not going to have that level of detail in the comprehensive plan that would, that would, you know, focus those uses into specific locations. And so, it, it probably wouldn't be an issue with the comp plan. I, you know, in processing a lot of these, I don't think we've ever run into any issue with the, the comp plan. So, we've gone through and, and looked at just similar jurisdictions than, than we did with the, the variance criteria. And so, we had, we looked at Boise's. A lot of them are, you know, I, I'm not going to go through all the criteria, but a lot of them are similar to, to our criteria, just worded a little bit differently. So, it's compatible with the neighborhood. It's not going to undo, unduly burden transportation, other public facilities in the area. We don't specifically say that in our, our criteria. Number three is similar to just meeting all the requirements. So, you know, why would you list yards, open spaces, pathways, walls? So, if those are all requirements of the zoning code, you should, you know, it'd probably be easier just to simplify it and say something similar to what we do, and, and just say it has to meet all standards of the, the zoning code. And so, they've just individually listed a lot of those. Adversely affect other property in the vicinity, so it comes down to that, and then compliance with the comp plan. So, quite a few that are similar to ours. I think number six and number seven just apply to specific criteria for multifamily or drive-up windows, just requiring something additional for those. Twin Falls had the, the highest number of criteria. They come through with nine. But a lot of them are, you know, once again, similar to, to what we have in our criteria. But, you know, a lot of them are, are pretty good. They're, they're pretty specific and detail-oriented, I, I should say. So, once again, harmonious with the area, character, general vicinity of the area.
Number nine states a value that we haven't seen.
But apparently, if it was by right, you could do that in Twin Falls.
Right. So, if you needed to have a CUP for a parking lot downtown, and you proposed to destroy the Moscow Hotel in order to put it in, then number nine would be where you couldn't do it by right.
Probably, probably apply, yeah. I think Twin Falls is also the one in the variance criteria that gave an exemption for historic properties. So, you didn't need to go through a variance process in order to replace your roof, and, you know, maybe if it, it was higher than the allowable height for that zone, they had, I think, an exemption at the beginning of their statement for the criteria, and it said, as long as it's not a historic building, and then it's bound by this criteria, what they had. So, maybe they have a really proactive historic preservation department in Twin Falls to, to insert that.
Either the only town that we've seen, or almost the only town in Idaho, that have made an effort to deify and make agricultural buildings historic. We, we haven't done much here at all. We, we've just started tearing everything down, and they've, they've actually developed. So, they do have a, an interesting historic view of agriculture in Twin Falls. We noticed that when we traveled the state, that we didn't find many. It's the only place we know that have put a, a grain elevator on, in a historic district. So, they, that's just a little aside about Twin Falls, that you don't know much about until you kind of go down and wander around and, and see what they've, what kind of things are bear special scrutiny.
So, they tend to focus on adequate facilities. You know, they have a few of them there that, just requiring that the, the property's serviced by adequate facilities, you know, highway, streets, police, fire. It's not going to create excessive additional requirements of public cost for public facilities and services. Will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, or conditions of operation that would be detrimental to any person, property. And it goes through kind of the similar nuisance language that we have. And so, there's this real, you know, they have about two or three of them that are of, of a similar nature. As, as compared to Coroner Lane, which has three, they compare it to the comp plan. Has to be compatible with location, setting existing usage on adjacent properties, and it has to be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. So, theirs is pretty bare bones. Lewiston is probably pretty similar to ours, although they have two less than we do. They've got similar language in the beginning about the nuisances. And then, actually, they do have that, that same one that we do, with the public necessity or justified by the applicant to be of benefit to the public. So, I think it was either, either they use some of our language, or we use some of theirs.
I'd just say it looks like they copied our language.
Yeah, yeah. Let's go with that.
But Joel, but Joel...
Harmony of the area, which is to be located. So, I think that's the same as one of ours. And then, environment or public health, safety, and then conformance of the comp plan. So, pretty similar to what we have. And then, looking at a jurisdiction out of state in Missoula. So, we've got applicable standards with the zoning code, is in the interest of the public, not going to have an adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or the community, is compatible with the surrounding area, and the operating characteristics are compatible. It's not going to create an adverse impact on traffic safety or comfort, including all modes of transport, so.
So, significant adverse impact. And I guess I get more struck on number three, compatible with the character of the surrounding area. It, in that, if I want to propose to put a church somewhere in the Fort Russell, the argument, well, there are already churches here. It's, it's, it's not this block. This block is going to see a lot of impact, but the Fort Russell neighborhood has churches, has a history of churches, and has a history of what churches do to Sunday mornings and things like that. It, it's, so that the art, so that the argument isn't exactly about this one thing, but it's about the character and texture of the neighborhood, rather than just, I don't want this church in my backyard. By way of trying to educate the, the proponent, and trying to educate the public as they come to the hearing, here are the criteria for reasonableness. And there's some, some zone in which, yeah, that's going to be reasonable, because it's been reasonable before. So, it's not a significant impact. Yeah, it'll impact it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the character of the sounding area speaks to, like, if it was in Fort Russell, and somebody comes in with a three-story modern building, then, you know, it's probably not going to be compatible with the, the scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. You know, I mean, it, it could be, just depending upon what...
Most of these are all kind of open-ended to where they're subjective.
Yeah, and that's why the Board of Adjustment's there to, you know, discuss that, make, make the hard, yeah, it is. You know, it, yeah. It, it's, because it's, you know, a lot of it's subjective.
Isn't, isn't part of what we're trying to do in this process, though, is make the criteria for the applicant more understandable, so that there is less subjectivity? Because as I read most of these, there's so, there's so much subjectivity. And if you're in a position of wanting to deny, or, and it's nice to have the subjectivity, because it's easier to deny if you've got something that's very vague. But isn't our objective to make this process cleaner for the applicant? So, and I, although I hate laundry lists like Twin Falls, that one probably is the less objective or subjective of, of any of them that we, we look at. And it's something that is really understandable for an applicant.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you know, obviously, just coming into this new like this, but isn't the purpose of this to help the Board of Adjustment make their decisions easier?
Yeah, I think it's under, you know, to make it understandable what the requirements are to everybody. So, the applicant going into this, you know, staff looking at the criteria, and then ultimately, the Board of Adjustment making the tough decision.
For years, the Board of Adjustment made their decisions by code. I mean, it's either allowed in the code, or it's not in the code. Now, we have them doing this, where things are more subjective. And so, now, it makes their decision-making harder, because it's not black and white. They're used to black and white decisions.
Yeah.
I, I had somebody, it's one of those times that you get a little insight about the public's perception of, in this case, P&amp;Z. The, the comment was, the accusation was, you guys just rubber stamp everything. I don't think so. But in, in reflecting, how would that perception arise if the criteria are clear to the applicant? If staff has been able to clearly coach the applicant, by the time the applicant gets here, the applicant should be doing something that is approvable, and not wasting everybody's time, public and everybody else. So, in some sense, yeah, it should look like we kind of, if we've coached well.
Right. There's been a lot of work that's gone on before.
Right. And this is the coaching tool. So, it's another side of what you're saying in terms of eligibility and stuff.
Well, we've seen examples in other towns. I think more in other towns than I've seen every, than I've seen here, where you have stories of staff and commissions being on different pages. And then, you have issues come up where, and often, staffs get fired over such things. But when, 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 there isn't that similar point of, of view, where we're all trying to go in roughly the same direction. And occasionally, you see, we read about somebody, you know, staff decided, no, and, and it goes against the grain or whatever. So, that can, it, it can certainly happen. But when you, when you go back to some of the words, the, the character of the surrounding area and harmony, you know, that's tough. Those are tougher words. I'm, I'm just thinking about, can we build a metal building in downtown? What about harmony, especially given a historic district? Now, we have a metal building or two. They're not in the historic district, for sure, but we've, as I recall, a few years ago, we've had a, a couple of those issues. And there's where that word harmony or the character of the surrounding area comes in. And obviously, we have different, slightly different points of view about it.
Well, I remember when the, the St. Mary's School gym burst, came to, to bear. The first objection was that they were going to put a, cover their vacant lot with parking, which doesn't really exist in any other church. Pretty much, in all of Fort Russell, everybody parks on the street. And then, we're going to break through the historic wall and take it out, that wall that goes around. So, that, that got, and dump traffic onto a, you know, pretty quiet neighborhood streets that only allow parking on one side. And then, they wanted to exceed the height limit. So, there were a number of factors where harmony becomes a really important criteria. And it is subjective, but, you know, you start to define it depending, it's, it's a place-based definition. You can't kind of, I don't think, define it any more clearly than... more clearly than harmony, harmonious, when you're talking about different neighborhoods with different characteristics. So I think it's pretty, personally, I think it's important to keep it in there. Even if it creates some non-black and white discussion, you know.
Well, there's always going to be some, but it just occurs to me as you're talking about conflicts between staff and commission, a process has to anticipate that there's going to be a change in commission and a change in staff, and it's got to somehow be able to adapt to potential changes in personalities. It's, it's a lot about personalities or, or skills. So the, and I think your point's really well-taken. It's just that part of the process that we're going to try to do here, I think, is to, to define it well enough so that it minimizes those conflicts. And I'm sorry, let me ask one, one more question, Wendy, because it really brought up, to me, an important issue. When you define a historic district, does it talk in pretty specific language about something that you could call the harmony? That is to say, when you're looking at a conditional use permit or whatever that would come into that district, does the definition and, maybe not the definition, but the description of the historic district give enough definitions so that there shouldn't be a question of the harmony?
Well, generally, that would really come in with design guidelines. I mean, we don't have any historic districts.
We don't, okay.
Design review. I mean, that's where you, I mean, historic districts are defined by their period of significance and sort of like characteristics within a certain time period or stylistically. But they, it's really design guidelines that start to define what you're talking about. I think where, where something would be compatible. You can build anything you want in any of our, as long as you meet the building code and zoning requirements. So, I mean, the way we have it. Whereas Charleston, New Orleans, no, not quite the same.
Yeah, we've, we've set, we've talked about what the historic district has in it. So we've set ourselves, we'd be ready to have design guidelines. Were we interested in, in doing that? I mean, because we kind of know, we've, as we've, that's how we've increased the size of the Fort Russell district, by looking at, again, those stylistic qualities that seem to make a district, give it a totality. So we've said what those are, but now we haven't taken that next step.
Well, I just want to add that we have two national historic districts, but they have no design regulation associated. So if you wanted to do something like that, it would need to be a local historic district. It's regulatory.
Let's see, I think I have Post Falls here. So this is pretty unique, just that it, implication of the special use would conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district. And so usually you have a purpose statement at the beginning, and it's real general about what the, you know, intentions of the district. And it's not very long. And so, you know, that, I'd be interested to see how, I guess, what their purpose statements look like and how they would apply that to, to a special use or a conditional use.
It's a hard place in Post Falls to find any characteristic that you'd like to write a poem about. So it's harder for them. I, I think there are other towns that have more qualities that, that set up what, what, what harmony is.
And number two is just, you know, a good way to say, meeting all the applicable requirements of, of the various laws that would apply to the property. And then health, safety, welfare of the public, and then has to be consistent with the goals and the policies and the comp plan. So not too dissimilar than, than the rest of them. Across the, the border here in Pullman, they have a, probably a unique one as well, you know, consistent with the comp plan, has to be consistent with the purposes of the zoning districts located in, has to meet all the applicable development standards. And then it goes through a lot of the applicable development standards in number four. So adequate size and shape, you know, that, that would just be meeting the applicable development standard. So a little redundancy there. Probably a carryover from some of the other ones, as far as the sufficient access to, to streets and, and other adjacent roadways to carry the, the quantity and quality of the traffic to the site. That's one, you know, you see, you see over and over again in other jurisdictions, but we don't address that in our language.
I kind of like seeing it there.
Yeah, and I, we get to the, the proposal here, I think we've incorporated that in there. Compatible with surrounding land uses, you know, provide adequate parking. Again, providing adequate parking is going to end up being in the, meeting all applicable development standards. And then it has to be served by adequate public utilities and facilities. So that would come back on kind of the sufficient access, streets and highways. So that should probably be wrapped up within that one.
I have a question just with the, oh, the, the top one, and maybe, I mean, sometimes people apply for conditional use. Oh, no, it's variance, isn't it, when you, when you go with a substandard lot size?
Yeah.
Okay, no matter.
It'd be a variance.
It's interesting that they do the comp plan right off the bat, right at the top of a lot of the things. So it seems clear that they're copying a Washington scenario that's a little different than the Idaho scenario. Because ours seem to follow a kind of a general pattern, and they started off with the comp plan right away.
Yeah. So getting back to our criteria, you know, when we sat down and went through these and compared these to the other jurisdictions, kind of wanted to, to put them in maybe an order that would make the most sense to, you know, to maybe somebody using the criteria. And so, you know, I think that, so we came up with these seven, and we kind of flipped back and forth. But, you know, I think it's probably good right away just to set the, the parameters here about, you know, it has to be allowed within the zoning district. And so, you know, probably pretty easy if they've made it all the way up to the Board of Adjustment, and we've told them that it isn't allowed to use, or they found that out. Pretty self-explanatory, but maybe just nice to get that one out of the way right away, that the proposed use is conditionally permitted use within the zoning district. So, you know, there's, there's no if, ands, or buts. It's, it's allowed, and we can move on. Two, the character of the proposed use will be in harmony with the neighborhood and surrounding land uses. So probably that's similar language to what we currently have. And then getting to number three, the proposed use as approved. So we kind of struggled back and forth on this because, you know, we have the language of unmitigable in other criteria for, I think, the rezones. So it's, you know, trying to clearly state that as long as, you know, you may have nuisances that are generated from that use, but if they're appropriately mitigated, then they should have no injurious or detrimental effects to those adjoining properties of the neighborhood. And so, you know, and this certainly could be tweaked a little bit more, but what we'd come up with was the proposed use as approved or conditionally approved. So, you know, typically, in order to mitigate some of those issues, the board would impose conditions on, on the permit. And so that's what we were trying to say with the conditionally approved, will not generate nuisances. So maybe you have exhaust, you know, that comes out of a smokestack, and, you know, it's a nuisance for the odor that is emitted. And you put a carbon filter, you know, charcoal filter on that to mitigate that, that nuisance. And so, you know, just wanted to kind of clearly state that, well, you know, you, there may be nuisances. I mean, that's what we're trying to mitigate here and through the, the process of, of going to the Board of Adjustment.
Wouldn't it be more straightforward to say as approved, or as approved with condition, or with conditions? I was trying to figure out what conditional approval was.
Yeah, it pretty much means approved with conditions.
Approved with conditions.
Yeah, different way of saying it. But, you know, I mean, it, if it'd make it clear to say, I mean, what, we liked what Lewiston had. So they had something similar, but at the end they say, or if so, that any anticipated nuisance will be appropriately mitigated. But we wanted to say it in a way where it's clear that there were, you know, through conditions.
Yeah.
That, you know, the use would be, or the nuisance would be appropriately mitigated. And so, you know, that may be a moving target and see, see if we can make it a little bit more clear. But, you know, that, that's kind of what we came up with. And then moving on to number four, location, design, and size, the proposed use will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. So I think we've kind of got out of the routine of having Public Works comment on a lot of these applications. Usually they'll comment if there's an insufficiency. But providing comments every time just to verify, you know, in a lot of these land use matters, whether it be a rezone or a subdivision plat that maybe doesn't, you know, go to the Board of Adjustment, comes to planning and zoning, just to make sure that we've got confirmation. And, and there was a point in time where we didn't have the capability of, you know, verifying that, but we've got a, you know, sewer master plan, you know, transportation master plan, where all these things are modeled, and we can actually put them in and, and, you know, figure out these answers a lot more clearly now than, you know, it was a lot more challenging at one point in time. So, you know, I don't really see any issue with putting that one in there, similar to what, you know, a lot of the other jurisdictions do, just making sure that, you know, it's going to be adequately served by the infrastructure surrounding the site. Carrying over, you know, similar to what we have, proposed use will not endanger public health or safety if located where proposed, meets all develop, applicable development standards of the zoning code, and it won't be in conflict with a comprehensive plan. So that was, that was our crack at maybe some rearranging of the current criteria and clarifying some of those, and then, you know, adding the adequately served by existing streets, public facilities. I think it's maybe the only new one that we added, you know, other than just number one, just making sure it's allowed in that zone. So.
Those do seem to be much more objective. They're much easier to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm still trying to wordsmith number three.
Well, that's the one that we, you know, I mean, we, yeah.
I propose, the proposed use as approved with any required conditions will not generate.
That's good, yeah. As approved with.
With any required conditions.
Including.
Or the proposed use as conditionally approved.
I still, I still don't know what a conditional approval is. Sounds like something a more of a, we either approve it or deny it. We don't conditionally approve.
As approved with conditions if required.
Or as approved with conditions.
We do add conditions on things. It's just a, and a black way of saying it, isn't it? You want it a little bit more direct.
I want it more direct.
Yeah, I mean, or we just say that the proposed use as approved, or as approved with conditions will not generate.
That's right.
That's better.
That's better.
It's kind of like, is conditionally approved, but we may come back and revisit it later if the way you read.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was when I started.
Yeah.
If, if, if we're picking at number three, it would help me to pull that whole parenthetic thing out of there. That is, it will not generate nuisances that would be injurious. Just help me read that, and then, for example, nuisances is in parentheses at the end of that, rather than right in the middle of the.
Such as at the end.
Right, right.
Okay. So the statement in parentheses you put at the end?
Right, just slide it to the end.
Okay. Other than that, I've seen.
I, I like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I do too.
Yeah.
I'd like the, a couple of them have environmental, I forget which, was it Missoula and Pullman? Or was it Pullman and?
Twin Falls.
Twin Falls. Yeah, yeah.
Probably somewhere in their public health and safety.
Yeah, let's see.
The, the problem I see with those is the, the word environmental can be, have so many meanings to so many different people.
Yeah, the, the envi, yeah, I don't even know if that would be environmental here. It's the environment, so the surrounding area. Yeah, I think you'd almost, I mean, in reality, I think you'd probably capture that in, you know, a lot of the environmental would probably be captured in the nuisance, as well as the public health and safety. You know, I think if it's damaging the environment, so high likelihood it's going to be damaging the people in the environment. So that's all I have?
Okay.
Unless you have any other questions or?
Well done.
Yeah, good work.
All right, number seven, the shared readings discussion. You'll recall that there were two readings. Oh, wait. So we have been doing for our professional learning for the last almost two years. Every four to six weeks, I call for suggested online resource, a couple of them, we try to group them on a topic. And then we read them and then discuss to the extent that we have time and interest in, in a meeting. We talk about those and then we'll start over the process and read something else. And these two, one was on a, a discussion about density and the value of density, which I have to read again, I think. I've read it several times and I still, because he's arguing that density isn't the right metric. And another was on tax valuation. Both of them are coming at, how do we design our city so that we are supporting the things that the city needs, like paying for its infrastructure, paying for the things we, and some ways of designing the city are not as, as effective at yielding, they may yield more costs than benefits or. And then the third one, you'll recall, was YouTube video of this guy, Joe Minikazi, in Missoula, presenting ideas from that second paper. And, and my question to you had been, is this interesting? Should we bring some of this to Moscow in a presentation? And if so, who do we really need to get in the audience in order to get good value for money in, in bringing it?
My question would be, after looking at the video, because I think the video is very informative, and it's very accessible, and it's free. So my question would be, would that $10,000 fee include any kind of look at our community as part of the presentation? Because if it's simply coming in and using case study examples from all these other places that you can just go on YouTube and watch, maybe not, the person isn't live, but the ideas are there. I, I would have a hard time with that.
The proposal was to use our data.
Okay.
It would also be nice to see, as part of the presentation, basically a lesson in how to do this, how to do the math so that when, after he comes and makes the presentation and leaves, we would be equipped as a board to apply the principles to the things that come before us. That's, that's the, from what he said, you could, you would be able to go back and figure it out, but probably reinvent it a little on the way to.
And relative to the discussions that we've just been having, does it end up shaping criteria that we use either to design zoning districts or to design criteria for approval of certain special projects or whatever? The more we got to tire The more we got to tire meeting road, if we're going to spend a bunch of money, it's why I want to figure out who should be in the audience to help think about it and what should be our actual nut we'd like a little help thinking about cracking or cracking differently than we have been.
The thing that came to mind when I was looking at the video and reading through these was the, I can't remember the name of it, but it's the one out on Mountain View that recently came, where he wanted to change the lot size and the number of homes that would go in. And I thought, well, this would apply directly to that. If you've got fewer homes, that's going to be one cost over the long run. If you've got more homes, that's going to be another cost. And that's the kind of thing I see this being applicable to. So, the, I can't remember the name of the engineer that was here, but those kind of people in the audience, the engineers that do the designing of the subdivisions, the people that have property that they're going to want to subdivide, those kind of, the stakeholders, if you will, who are going to be doing these kind of projects.
The density article.
That was a tough one.
I had very serious problems with that one.
Me too.
I was going to go back and read it also because I thought, what did I just read? I had to get up and do something else.
It's not just density, I think is his point.
He's saying that density shouldn't be your central focus, that density is a side benefit from other decisions that generate density. That's not what I.
Do it right and the density will follow, rather than try to make density.
Exactly. Because density, I mean, density for density's sake, I would argue, I would agree with him, is not necessarily the right approach.
Well, I don't know, the density issue has always been difficult to, we go to cities, we go to Seattle, and the discussion about density is entirely different than being in Moscow and some things translate and some things don't. And that's a really, because if you're trying to build a mass transit system, then density absolutely has to be there or you can't have it. But we're not going to have a mass transit system in, you know, that isn't a part of our dialogue. Seattle's been killing itself for the last 20 years because they haven't figured it out, but that density is what you have to have to make.
But I think what he was reacting to is say, what's happening in Manhattan in certain places with these skinny little tall towers that are sort of, you know, really dense and I, but the type of development is more important than the goal of density by itself. So if you're just shooting for density, you can build all these towers in a park and have no street level and have no street life and have none of the other goals that you're looking for when you want density and mixed use, et cetera, because things are too far apart. And so I think it's, that was what I was getting out of it, and I think he's talking about a really urban kind of situation, which is not exactly what we are dealing with. So, I don't know if this makes sense, but it would be like if you had 10 towers along Main Street that were a block apart and on a third of the block and you had all this space in between, you might have the same density, but you lose the continuity of the street life and the vibrancy. And so I think, although he didn't say it very clearly, I think he was talking about density as a goal by itself is inadequate, that you have to think about what type of density. Well, if we developed our Topol Raza, the legacy crossing, with just towers in a park, would we accomplish the other goals that legacy crossing was set up to do? And even though the density would be there, that's what I think he was getting at, but he didn't do it very well.
No, boy.
Was this the?
Density is fine, but you, there's a real matter of balance that has to go with it.
Yeah, a lot of what he was talking about, I think, is the private development compared to what the public infrastructure that's required to serve that private development is. And, you know, the example he always used in the article was, you know, you own a $200,000 house. Well, if every hundred years you're required to completely rebuild all that infrastructure and it's going to cost you $200,000, who would make that investment? Because it's going to be the same as what the house costs. And so if the city has to come in and pay $200,000 to rebuild the property or the infrastructure in front of somebody's $200,000 house, then that's not a good investment for the, I guess, the municipality to make, is what.
Because the tax rate was.
That statement in itself is not really accurate.
Yeah.
In saying that, well, it's going to cost the city X amount of dollars every hundred years to rebuild this infrastructure. It's costing the residents of the city because it's going to be done and it's going to be paid for through taxing structure, okay? So, I guess I should read this article because it sounds interesting.
Why?
Okay, so you've got a neighborhood that's got, you know, 55 single-family residence homes and you've got a number of infrastructure for it, and there's a lot of other stuff that goes along with it also. Or as opposed to, and say, okay, so how many, what's the density going to be in that neighborhood? If you've got 55 homes, you're going to have 200 people in it, average of, well, probably average of 2.5. So, let's say you've got 300 people in it. So you take a downtown block and you build a density within, you fill that, and that's got a population of 300 people. What's the offsetting city expense to service those 300 people? What did the article say?
Well, it doesn't go into.
It's not that simple.
Well, I think the point he was making was that in making those decisions about putting the 300 residences in there, the cost per unit of infrastructure is going to be higher for each property than it will be downtown. And so it's a matter of considering those trade-offs. Do you want, if you want to live in a place where there's 300 residences in large lots, there's a cost to that in terms of the taxes you're going to pay to keep the infrastructure up. And that cost has to be factored in, especially when, and I can't remember if this was, actually, this density question article, I went and looked at that website, he had a talk that he gave where he talked more about the article and things in there. And he goes over the long term, that these things get set up with the developer fronting the money to put in all the infrastructure, and then the city takes it over. And the cost to the city in the long run, it's, the city ends up going in the hole because people don't want to pay the taxes that it takes to keep up that infrastructure. So it's factoring, it's looking at those costs upfront. When the city takes it over, what's this going to cost? What's that going to be over the long run? Is this really what people are going to want to do when it comes to paying taxes? Is that sustainable?
Well, first of all, it's not covered through taxes, it's covered through user fees. City changes the user fees as necessary to support the infrastructure changes.
Money out of the homeowner's pocket in the long run, however it's.
There's a difference between taxes and there's a difference, even though it's still money out of their pocket, user fees are something that's substantiated by the city as an enterprise fund to cover the cost of the infrastructure where taxes are utilized in a general fund, as you all know.
I think, of course, different municipalities run slightly differently than ours, but the one that, so water and sewer are handled by user fees. But our streets, we get some gas tax money, but we make up the difference out of general fund because there is no user fee on the street. And I think that that's been one of the places that he's seeing this problem, is that there are pieces of the infrastructure that are not funded by a specific revenue source.
I can see that, sure.
And that, and here we're struggling with the budget that we have for streets and the number of potholes that we have, and they don't necessarily line up quite. And how do you find the additional revenue for it? I've been reading an interesting sort of futurist, the guy's name is Michael Greer, and he's been writing essentially, it's a blog, it's a serialized short story, and it's, it's the United States in a further future. But this portion, it's the Midwest approximately, has become a new nation. And the way that they've approached this issue is that counties have decided what level of development infrastructure they wish to have, and they've named them by various periods, like 1920 is a vintage of level of infrastructure, and 1860 is a level of infrastructure. And in 1860, you get dirt roads, you get a constable, but you get a tax bill that goes along with dirt roads and a constable. Oh, you wanted curb gutters, sidewalk, you want 1950. And the tax bill that goes with that is. And so counties in this place have chosen levels of development with and without electricity.
I'd hate to be Don Palmer in finance.
Finance director.
But I think that that's the extremist end of this argument.
Yeah, but you know what happens? The people in the, what, 1560 or whatever it was, where they had no curbs, gutters, and gravel roads, pretty soon after, there's more people, and half a dozen or 20 of them get together and say, you know what? I think we should pave our streets, let's put an LID together here.
They're going to be tracking all that mud onto somebody's paved street and then put it down, you know, and they're going to have nuisance issues.
I wonder what the dialogue was like in Moscow in roughly 1912, when they paved the first streets. It'd be very interesting to be a fly on the wall and see, because, you know, we've got all these pictures up to 1910, dirt, 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 and of course, there were showers in the basement of the post office. You can imagine what a postman looked like when it came home, you know, after delivering. And I've never seen any write-up about it, but it would be intriguing just to see, because that shift from dirt and dirt in Moscow is not the same as dirt in Phoenix. You know, when you see pictures of wagons up to their axle in our, in our beautiful mud that we have during rainy seasons, it'd be interesting to see because that would kind of play on your idea of a 1910 view of Moscow and a 1920 view is really considerably different. I don't know how it changed economically, it'd be interesting to know.
I still believe in the economics of development. People will get what the people want, and I don't think the city should get in a real big situation where they start dictating how it's going to be done and where it's going to be done at, other than through our zoning and comprehensive plan. Person has property and they want to develop it into single-family residences and it's a reasonable situation and it can be approved and be done by right. If somebody downtown at Legacy Crossing or over by Rosar's, they decide that they're going to put in a 21-unit apartment house for higher density living, then that's great because they'll feel a need for that too. There's a balance, and that's what I said earlier about, density is great, but there's a balance that has to be going along with that density.
And I agree with you, and I think that the point of the article was, there's, the city is agreeing to pay money for that through taxes, user fees, whatever, which really gets spread to everybody. So, it's, yes, you do that, but there's a cost, there's a cost everybody's agreeing to pay for. And what is that?
That's why we do rate studies. That's why we did a rate study for the sewer, did a rate study for sanitation, so we know down the road, we need to have X amount of dollars to replace this infrastructure because of the fact that these folks want to live where they want to live and they want to have the services that they want to have. This is what it's going to cost and this is what the user fees are going to be in order to protect that infrastructure to replace it as needed. So, probably is more important in your really large metropolitan areas, Portland, Seattle, you know, where they've really got to start taking a look at, there's only a finite amount of land that's available. In a smaller municipality like Moscow, I think we're doing pretty well the way we're going.
So, any other comments?
We didn't really get to the issue of whether or not we want to spend $10,000 to have this guy. I liked your comment, I mean, I don't see the value if he's just coming to talk, even if we have a fairly large audience, I'd like to see something more out of it. So, your idea that he would come and actually study the community, I got tired of listening to Asheville stuff, and to me, the East and the South are totally different environments that, and so his perspective was something that I didn't see would have a lot of value for us.
And when he talked about Missoula, he had quite a few maps and had obviously looked at Missoula. And I don't know if he looked at Missoula for $10,000 or $100,000, but I suspect it wasn't for $10,000.
But when he was doing his bicycle tax thing, I mean, to get any value of something like that, he'd really have to know what our tax system is and what flexibility we have and what the city can do with that kind of thing, which would take, to me, a lot of study on his part, so I don't know.
I think in some ways, we're better off, as I look back at our, some, few things that we've done, to get some of these things that we can look at here inexpensively and do it together and have the discussion would be, let me just say this, that I've been pretty disappointed with the several agencies, the teams that we've brought in to kind of tell us stuff. And I can name two or three of the firms that we've hired over the last 12 or 13 years, and it just, I've been really disappointed that they come in and wave and shout a little bit, but we don't, it doesn't leave us with a tool.
Good break.
They bring in, I think you're right, I know what you're talking about, I remember the instances, and they bring in this matrix that they have figured out fits the generalities of most municipalities without figuring in the uniqueness of our own municipality.
And I don't want to go against our educating ourselves, so I would, I know a few years ago, when Lambert was on the commission, we showed a couple of videos where we got together and looked at them, because I'm a little, I haven't studied the one where I was supposed to study as well as I should have, and so I'll say I need to do that. But I like the idea of, you know, whether it's a couple of commissions or just one commission, taking some time to educate ourselves and then discussing what we've heard, and in my mind, that's really useful because we get to know each other, we get to know the way each one of us sort of sees things. And I think it's, I want to support the idea of that education, but bringing in somebody fancy, the thought of $10,000 just fries my brain a little bit because we do that at the university, you bring somebody in and 30 people kind of hear it and it's kind of a wonderful thing for a few people, but I don't know if it serves us.
Well, I like your idea, I mean, in watching the video, it seems like there are several commissions that the education would be useful to, even watching the video together and discussing it and having some kind of workshop as a result of that. I mean, I was immediately thinking of the Historic Preservation Commission because I think he, what's his name? Minikazi makes a really compelling case for, you know, revitalizing urban cores and downtown, our own downtown core. And it would be interesting to really learn the process to figure out how we could make revenue comparisons between different districts within our city, you know, in terms of what type of development do we want to encourage? I mean, you can let development happen, but you can also encourage some type of development over others if it's more beneficial to the whole community. And so. And so I could see it as a wonderful educational opportunity if we could get several commissions together and maybe get everybody to a level of literacy where we could get more mileage out of somebody like that if they were to come in to help study this place, or, you know, add to the layer, or teach us how to do it.
And I hear what you're saying, but I, I started down this path, I saw some of his work, a couple other things that I read by Minn Cozy, and I thought, huh, we have, whatever it is, $1,200 budget as a commission, which we often don't spend, what if we were to use that budget?
And we have, we can go for CLG grants in historic preservation and bring money for something as well, for education as well.
But so I started imagining in that, in that $1,000, $1,200 range.
Yeah.
When this came in, 10 times bigger.
Yeah, that's a bit over the budget.
Right. It was over our budget, and then, so then I'm like, is there really the value for money? And I'm asking that in the, I'm not, I don't believe it, but I want to ask it hard and see. And I, what I'm hearing is, there are ideas here that may be valuable, our professional learning that may be valuable, this is a mechanism, flying this guy in doesn't seem to be. So then the question would be, what activity, what mechanism might we develop that would let us get several commissions together and sit together and really work through something a little bit? I don't know. So I appreciate all the feedback, and I think just going back to drawing boards and saying, well, what's another, another way to go at some of these, learning more about some of these ideas about our city in ways that it really helps us do our work.
It's an interesting thing that, something that I've observed, just tangential to this, Lewiston has become part of this Main Street thing, and they're working hard on their downtown, and they're, I think they're doing some really good stuff. But oddly enough, we don't belong to the Main Street program, and our Main Street's just working really well. There isn't, and what shocked me is that we're moving, even though we've started talking about it, but the energy of Main Street has begun to move north a little bit, and we're now seeing ourselves going to some other restaurants just up the way and changing the dynamic of our downtown, and it's really exciting. And I'm just amazed that we, without any organization that says, oh, we're part of the Main Street program, no, we are Main Street, we just make it work.
What you're seeing is one of the exact absolute uniquenesses of this city, is we have very educated people that are very committed to the community, that have had long-term places in different commissions, that their interest is in the betterment of the community, and at the same time, they're willing to be more educated as to what's out there and whether their communities are doing. But because you live here, because you're so active, you're able to take that education that you've learned and apply it within our own matrix and decide whether it's going to work or not. You know, it's interesting what you say about Lewiston and their Main Street program, and they still really haven't got that figured out, but look how they're fighting over their urban renewal district. I mean, my goodness, they can't, they're just beating each other up over that. And we're fighting the state of Idaho to keep them from changing urban renewal districts so that we can continue doing the good things that we do. So that is, I'll go back to what I said about Moscow being so unique because of the people that we have here.
Somehow, yeah, somehow we just got, we're lucky enough, maybe, that our relationship, our physical relationship with the university seems to be
Yes.
Something we can use. Washington State, even though they have vastly more money and no doubt brighter people than we have, they don't have something that works as well as ours does. The relationship between the university and the downtown isn't as symbiotic as ours. And I don't, and I think we, maybe we could see why, but it, I don't know, our little town is, it's so dependent, I mean, I get worried, I hate to make a speech about, watching the university is struggling a little bit with their dynamic of getting new students, and we have to have them get more students. I mean, there isn't anything else that we, there's no other horse in the garage. It just, that's what we've got, you know, since, I've been realizing in my old age that, you know, we don't have water, we don't have an airport, we don't, and I know that, I'm not, but, you know, it's hard for me when I want to go to Detroit to fly Moscow, but with, without, we just don't have those things, so we have to use the things that we do have. And I'm not sure people that we bring in can understand that as quickly as they need to understand it, you know, about that. Because we've watched even Sixth Street began to, just in the last 25 years, Sixth Street has become a much more engaging street, hasn't it?
Yep.
And we always thought maybe it should, but it has done. And with, so I guess I'm, I'm still thinking that we need to really work on this educational thing, but do it in a way that seems to fit us, not what people in Seattle or even in Park City, they can spend $10,000 without hurting anybody, because they've got rich people that can just pull $10,000 out of their pocket, but we don't have that here. We have to do things that are the Moscow way, I think.
Okay, great. Let's call good feedback. Topics for next round of reading?
Reread.
Understand density from other perspectives.
Wendy, you had raised an issue that was really a complete streets kind of thing, and I'd proposed finding a complete streets article and a not complete streets article. Is that something you'd like? We've been doing a lot of infill density kind of thing for a while now, we read about trees sometime in the summer, but.
What, complete streets, what is that?
That's what we need to find out.
It's a notion of supporting, well, how to support a wide range of modes of
Multimodal and
Transportation, right, so. And A view would be that there's bike lanes and there's sidewalks and there's
But it also gets into land use and aligning land use and some planning.
It just seems, as an example, for me, in our little town, Main Street is really close to a complete street, while both Jackson and Washington are streets that serve trucks and traffic, and it's no place, I mean, I just am dumbfounded that we don't hurt more people, because if you're in the wrong lane and you've got a truck and you're going along, I mean, boom, those three lanes are ripping, and yet, we've got plenty of traffic on Main Street, but we have people and bikes and traffic all kind of living together in really a nice way. Now, you know it better than I do, because you have to cross Jackson every day to go have lunch.
Take my life in my hands.
Or watch you eat at the office. So, you know, how do you get across that?
Good timing.
That thing. So I was, I like, I like that.
Yeah.
I'm supportive of it. I was trying to talk to transportation the other day about thinking about Third as a complete street if, if
Talking about that. Let me ask you this question. How many of you have read our multimodal transportation plan in depth?
I didn't know the city had a mobile.
Exactly. We just spent thousands of dollars of federal grant money to put a multimodal transportation plan together, and it was just released this last year. So I think you should get copies for everybody, and I think all of you should read that first.
Good idea.
I think that would be good reading for you.
Yeah, it is a good idea.
Yeah. And then we can figure out what, there we are in the
I'm like the Com Plan. I don't think we've paid too much homage to it, maybe we should.
I remember when it came out, I know some of the highlights.
At one point, I asked for it in paper and was told that it didn't exist in that mode in a way I could get it at least, and that it existed online, and that became enough of a barrier.
Multimodal transportation plan?
Wouldn't it be through the transportation mission, Joel? I mean, can't, I mean, you'd be able to access it on your
It's on the web.
But we could print up bits and pieces of it and discuss it, and that may be something we should do.
I'll work with staff on that. And then, then maybe we'll read the complete streets as another piece to.
Because it isn't, well, we've just spent a few dollars in the last two years at its preservation commission, and we've got this big thick document now, and it's pretty scary, you know? And so only a few people, probably Wendy probably knows it.
I've read it more than once.
The Transportation Commission have read that. My credit. I'm going to rest on the Transportation Commission have read it.
And then no one looks at it.
Probably half. Transportation Committee, only half of them have read the multimodal transportation plan.
We've had a number of presentations on it.
So what is the outcome of it? I mean, what is being done with the multimodal transportation?
Well, I think it's probably been, it's been advised to everybody that it's now available, and then it's been dusted and put it back up on a shelf and collected dust, just like so damn many of those others do. That's why I brought that up. Mike, I don't see any reason at all why you can't print off a copy of that and then print out enough copies for everybody on planning and zoning to have.
Sure.
It's
But again, I'd really
There's some good stuff in there.
Really, so, I mean, it talks about, it talks about bicycle paths, it talks about public transportation, it talks about the pluses and minuses of a Third Street Bridge. Do you guys know where this whole plan ended up starting out at? Five years ago or four years ago, I'm sitting on Public Works in Finance, and I, and we had been talking about the Third Street Bridge, and I asked Les, he was McDonald, he was sitting there, I said, and I had seen some preliminary data, and I said, Les, I said, can you get us some, some data that just tells us how the streets would be affected on the Third Street Bridge, the ancillary streets, you know, D Street, C Street, A Street, how this would change? Because the concern I had was, what would it do to the intersection of Third and Washington? You know, would it overloaded? Would it really become gridlocked and this type of thing? Yeah, we can do that. And it didn't happen, it didn't happen. And finally, I find out that, yeah, we've applied, we've received a federal grant, so now we can put together a complete multimodal transportation study that took, I don't know how many, three years to get done, all because I just wanted to look at some traffic numbers. But anyway, we've got it, and you guys ought to read it.
Yeah, that's
And I still don't believe the numbers they came up with. Do you?
You want to know what I, one thing that I've been told that I, that I find a really hard thing to believe, and that was when we were talking about an east-west bypass, which, you know, we've all talked about really needing getting traffic from the east side of Latah, or from east side of Latah County across, you know, whether they're going to U of I, or whether they're going to Pullman or whatever. We were told, and I say we, and I can't even tell you who told us that, I think it was the folks that put this plan together, that even if we had that bypass, it would not relieve the traffic count at the intersection of Third and Washington. And I said, how can that possibly be? You've got all these people that are no longer going through downtown Moscow to get to Pullman. Yet you still not, we're still going to have the same numbers? So, yeah, do I believe the numbers? I don't know. They're experts, I'm not. I'm just, just a guy.
Maybe the rest of us drive around more maniacally through that intersection and you get the other guys out of it.
Yeah.
Well, you know that if they have money in Seattle, it's a world-class city now, but you and I all, we all know, if we've been to Seattle, that things have changed in the last 20 years, and getting from here to there in Seattle has gotten worser and worser. And it's, it's incredible, and I can just relate it to the fact that I spent a year in New York City, well, as an old person, going to grad school, but having a subway solved all that problem for me. I lived for one year of my life, I didn't own a car, and it was a brand-new experience for an Idaho person, you know, to realize that I could step out of my apartment and go anywhere I wanted to in New York, just that fast, and not have to sit there waiting for a traffic light, or be in a, in a jam someplace. It was a shocking thing.
I-5 bisects Seattle's otherwise distributed grid, so there's no potential for a distributed grid. It all gets gummed up with everybody trying to get on I-5. I mean, I lived there for seven years, and it was bad, I'll tell you, in late 1970s, early 80s. It hasn't, it's gotten worse, but it was bad then, and it was, you know, quite a bit smaller, but
It's taken 90 minutes going from the airport to the university.
My only point is that they've hired the best traffic people, and I get to have Seattle, so let's not get too excited.
Very strict land, they got nowhere to grow and nowhere to put roads.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? We're adjourned, and I'll work with Mike on some of these ideas.